Good afternoon, S T members of the committee, representatives from the office of the Auditor General and from the Accounting General's Department. I also extend a warm welcome to members of the public who are joining us via live stream on our social media platform. Your interest is a reminder that accountability in public finances is a shared national responsibility. It is both an honor and a serious duty to begin this first public hearing of the Public Joint Account Committee for this new year 2025-2023 parliamentary session. Before we proceed, I want to acknowledge all members of the committee from both houses of the representatives and from the Senate for their willingness to serve on this important oversight committee. I welcome Honorable Godwin Hila, Honorable Karim Musa, and Honorable Senator Daniel Chanona. I recognize that not all members may be here today due to other parliamentary or ministerial duties, but each member contribution will remain vital as we move forward. As chairpersons, I take the role with humility and commitment. The committee's responsibility is not partisan. It is about ensuring that public funds are spent efficiently, transparently, and in the best interests of the beliefs and people. Today, we begin by considering the Auditor General's report for 2015-2016. While our broader goal is to strengthen financial accountability and foster public trust in the management of our natural resources. This committee will work constructively, asking the necessary questions, listening carefully, and providing recommendations that make our system stronger and more transparent. I thank the Office of the Clerk and the staff of the National Assembly for their continued support and acknowledge the cooperation of the Auditor General and the Accountant General's Department. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please welcome Ms. Maria Rodriguez, the Auditor General? Good afternoon. Madam Clerk, can you please give the oath, please? Thank you very much and welcome to today's first sitting. I'm very nervous too because it's my first sitting. Please have a seat. Yes, good. Okay. Before we start asking any question, do you have any reports or anything like that you want to present to us prior to us asking any questions?
I prepared a presentation based on the request committed on what you wanted to update.
Okay, please proceed.
One of the first requests was possible legislative amendments to the FARAS Act. I am happy to inform that on January 2025, we had the assistance of the Center for Audit Excellence of the U.S. Government Accountability Office, who did an assessment for us for the period July to 2024. And they looked at three areas. The first one is transparency in reporting audit findings. They have recommended us to receive authority to independently publish our audit report to authorize our office to issue reports to the public. The second area was budgetary independence, financial independence to include submitting its budget directly to the National Assembly, rather than treating the office budget in the same way as the other ministries do. This would require that we submit our operating budget directly to the National Assembly for you to vote, analyze, and give some comments about it. Regarding independence in HR management, they are saying recommending independence in acquiring and managing our human resources. This will require analyzing the status and possible flexibilities with the current civil service system to consider us giving, having some control over hiring, promotion, and compensation decisions. It is appropriate to balance the function between the Ministry of the Public Service and those at my office performs to ensure that we maintain independence while also leveraging certain systems and functions of the ministry to avoid a duplication of effort. Regarding the status of the draft Audit General Bill, a presentation of the bill was done in cabinet in 2022. It was instructed to be forwarded to the Attorney General. In July 2022, the Solicitor General did provide comments. Upon taking office in March 2025, it is my understanding that there was no response to the comments and proposed amendments by our office. So I made contact with the Solicitor General to obtain an opt-in, and I was informed that I am at liberty to review and instruct how to proceed. Pending this process, the office will seek to work on the recommendations given by the J O, as mentioned earlier, considering that the publishing of reports, our work, is our priority for the next strategic plan 2026-2030. I would also like to advise that CAROSI, which is the Caribbean region for all Supreme Audit Institutions, is also working on a model Auditor General Act for the Caribbean region. Rules and communication channels between the committee and my office, I would like to start with Constitution. The Constitution gives me way to communicate with the Minister of Finance and notify the Clerk of the National Assembly when it comes to my annual audit report. It also speaks about whether there is a failure of tabling of reports, then I must communicate with the Clerk of the National Assembly. The FARAS says regarding my annual reports that I must communicate directly to the Minister of Finance. Failure of tabling the reports, then I communicate with the Speaker and the President of the Senate. We perform inspection management reports. You will have noted chapter six in our report speaks of individual audits done. My communication regarding these inspection and management reports, according to the regulations, I must communicate to the Ministry concerned, the Accountant General, and the Financial Secretary. However, it is in our discretion, we also copy reports to the Ministry of the Public Service when we recommend disciplinary action. This is for them to be aware that something is coming. And I would like to note that there is nowhere in my regulations that will allow me to give reports to the media, donor agency, or any other entity. That will include the J P A C. CAROSI, because of this, CAROSI, which is again the Caribbean region for Supreme Audit Institutions, has suggested an M O U to communicate with J P A C on audit reports issued by the office. So I took the liberty of going through the regulations to discuss your role, specifically the Control of Public Expenditure Handbook, sections 15 to 19. It says that the legislature reserves for itself two duties with regards to expenditure. First, so authorize it, and secondly, to satisfy itself the executive. That the executive to whom the supply has been made available spends it for the purposes for which it was provided and spends it efficiently and without fees. And that is the function of the Public Accounts Committee. To highlight a bit, section 16 and not to read its entirety, you review the accounts in light of the report submitted by my office. Also important to note that you are assisted by my advice and the advice of other officers in the Ministry of Finance to be able to go ahead and review and discuss any aspect of the government account. And lastly there, the Public Accounts Committee therefore can and should become a powerful instrument for the exposure of waste, inefficiency, and all forms of maladministration. Nineteen, as the ultimate guardian of the public purse, it is incumbent on the P E C to carry out its functions in the way it deems fit. There is also some functions in the financial orders for you. Financial order number one says that you can hold personally pecunially liable the accounting officer for the administration of the vote for the services under their control. Financial order two also says that it is part of the functions of the PAC to draw attention to the existence of wasteful expenditure where it finds it, and the accounting officer must be prepared to defend himself on such charges when he appears before the committee. Financial order four regards revenue and other receipts for which his department or office is responsible. The accounting officer is held answerable to the legislature to the Public Accounts Committee. And sixteen, an accounting officer, since it will be he who will account to the public's account committee for all expenditure made by his department, and it will be he who will be open to surcharge if the committee is not satisfied that the expenditure was properly made. Therefore, you have the power to surcharge. And those are for the three out of the four questions that you had asked me. I believe the questions already reported itself will have to be done through yourself.
Ms. Rodriguez, thank you very much for that report. Now I call on the members who has any questions for Ms. Rodriguez, Auditor General. Senator Chanona?
Only because my colleague said ladies first today, Chair.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Ms. Atas, for that. Sorry, Mrs. Rodriguez, apologies for that presentation. Much appreciated. Just as a point of clarity, you mentioned CAROSI. Does that mean that CAROSI has seen the draft that the Office of the Auditor General has prepared and has been able to provide any insight or?
No, no, they haven't. They don't normally request for our individual acts. They are trying to work on something for the Caribbean region, for all the Caribbean countries.
Would it be your estimation that the draft that we've prepared might be helpful to the region in terms of setting a benchmark?
Definitely, definitely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. And then one more clarification in terms of the communication in the regarding reports and general communication. Given a couple of the rules and the financial orders that you reference do speak to what would require communication between your office. So just curious in terms of how that's been interpreted now and what we would need to do to make sure that if there are any changes that need to be made to the legislation for clarity of that communication channel, how would that, what would that be?
Right. So because the individual reports are compiled and placed in the annual report, that's how you will be able to get it when the Ministry of Finance presents it to the National Assembly. The M O U that I was referring is specifically for that, to seek the National Assembly's support to step out of the annual report process, to have a more direct communication with the J P A C regarding the audit work.
So it would only take an M O U? It wouldn't be?
Well, that's the suggestion right now, an M O U with, of course, National Assembly's permission or perhaps a resolution to proceed with separate or outside of the annual report process.
Okay. Would it be helpful for this committee to consider voicing support for such an M O U or how would we be helpful in that step?
Well, I will come to the committee with the proper Well, I will come to the committee with the proposal of the MOU, and both of us need to communicate on whether it's good and we agree to it, and then we will seek submission to the National Assembly, the Ministry of Finance, for a resolution. Because as is, I am limited to who I can communicate my work to.
Yes. And we certainly want to support, just to frame that whoever you would feel or determine would be helpful to communicate with in order to perform your function to the best of the mandate, we want to support. So that is the frame in which the question is being posed.
Right. While the MOU will be important, we can discuss current reports, current individual management reports that you can presently address and not wait for the annual report process that, as you can see, is backlog.
Just in terms of context, as we come into this new parliamentary session and the work of this committee as it's newly comprised, can you speak, especially for the public's benefit, in terms of the session that you held during the parliamentary recess with support from, I believe, the Auditor General's Office of India?
Yes, yes, thank you for that opportunity. We have a project ongoing with the accountability, this global S I project of the INTOSI. INTOSI now is the umbrella organization for Supreme Audit Institutions. You have CARO-SI, which is in the Caribbean, you have INTOSI, which is the umbrella organization. They have provided support for stakeholder engagement, and one of our major stakeholders is the National Assembly. So in August, we invited the National Assembly to attend a session on P F M. The Public Financial Management of Belize. In that session, we presented the cycle, what areas need support from the respective stakeholders who were present, and we spoke about S I independence, why it's necessary for us to be independent from the executive, so that we can exactly perform the duties that we can as independent as possible and not be depending on a third ministry or a line ministry to get what we need. It was a successful event. I think that the counterparts left very happy to see a full house. We had a full house. We had very good questions, very good collaboration from the National Assembly president, and I thank them for their time and effort in being there. It is important to start that kind of discussion with our stakeholders to understand what way forward we want for accountability and transparency in the country.
Would you leave Chair off? Just one more point, please.
Of course. You would ask as much questions as you want.
Thank you. Towards that end, one of my takeaways, I was able to attend the session. We noted that, and even most recently in attending a Caribbean, a Commonwealth-wide, actually, session, this is not a situation unique to Belize, unfortunately. However, other parliaments have been able to identify specific steps that can be made to see the preparation of multiple reports at the same time to provide that they be submitted in order to bring the reports closer up to the date. We're talking, are going to talk later today about the 2015-2016 report. Has there been a determination insofar as how this committee can support a similar approach from your office as the lead in terms of getting to the same position that those other jurisdictions have been able to?
Yes, you see, I am very cognizant of this backlog, and one of the first things that I did was to make, have communication with the Accountant General to move forward. Both of us have had discussions with donors who have also provided that kind of recommendation. My take on it is that I will need to seek Parliament's approval for an extension of time, not necessarily at thirty, thirty days. If you go back to the regulation, I have ninety days to audit one year. So let's say multiple years come, let's say five years come, that would mean five times ninety, you're talking about a long time. So what can happen is that I can write the National Assembly for a resolution on approval to extend my time. Now, the Act only says I can get thirty more days, but it's not based on the fact that I'm going to receive more than one annual statement. So it is really in the hands of Parliament to agree on extending the time that I have to conduct the audits of five statements. It is my understanding with the Accountant General that there is no source documents, and that will imply less field work for my staff, which will mean that we can accommodate the work with less field work and issue opinions still annually, because I need to submit each annual audit work that we did. So the report won't be a report of 2015 to 2020, let's say. It will be, you will receive a book for each year, a report for each year, but it is possible, except that I will need to request approval for an extension of time, and it will be something that we will need to calculate and work together with my team to make sure that we meet that new deadline set.
Thank you. I will propose that we make a note of that so that we can revisit that with you when the time comes. Just for general awareness, especially from the members of the public, when you say source documents, are you indicating that for 2016, 2017 onward, you don't have a set of statements that you would be able to produce a report on? Or can you clarify what is there?
It is my understanding that the reports are available. The reports are available up to nineteen twenty. I'm sure you'll meet with the account, nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Nineteen twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. But also that there are limited source documents to the transactions recorded thereon. So with limited source documents, there's limited field work that you can conduct. So it makes the work quicker, because you have to note that there is no source document. What we did with 2015, 2016, while we were aware that the source document was not available, we still did field work to go to the source of the data, which is the line ministries themselves. If they don't have it, then that's another issue, and hence why that was one of the issues we highlighted, that even the line ministries do not have the source documents.
And then just one question, and then I'll defer to my colleagues until we get into the report itself, but one of their slides noted that a mandate of exposure of waste, leakage, et cetera. Could you highlight the, we understand our mandate to review these accounts towards just that leakage, waste, fraud, whatever else may be happening, efficiency, as the case may apply, because hopefully you will have that as one of your findings. But just to highlight why that is important in terms of P F M, Public Financial Management?
Yes, the cycle is incomplete if there is no monitoring after the fact. The cycle begins with you approving the budget, us executing the budget, and we reporting to you how it was executed. So the cycle is incomplete if the PAC does not do their part in ensuring that these accounting officers are not doing, are doing what they're supposed to do. So if you have donor agencies coming and asking you about the performance, their public financial management cycle, it is actually incomplete, because you're not holding anyone accountable. And it is very important to do that part, and it also comes with allowing your public to see that you want to improve administration, you want to hold people accountable, so that these things don't reoccur year after year.
Thank you. Chair, I will reserve the rest of my questions for the report itself. Thank you.
Honorable Musa?
Thank you very much, Chair. Welcome, Ms. Maria. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Just a few questions. One, a very general question, and the second, a more specific question. Generally speaking, and I saw in your presentation, you mentioned the need for greater independence, not just in your budget for the Auditor General's department, but also in terms of your hiring. Is there anything, and this is, again, is a general statement, is there anything that you can point to for us as the JPAC, to better understand your role and your department's role, that we as a JPAC could do, or the government could do, to improve the situation, so to speak, at the Auditor General's department, aside from the budgetary and aside from the independence of hiring that you have found issues with whenever you're carrying out your duties, so that we can better understand the issues that you're facing at the Auditor General's department?
Yes, certainly. When it comes to the hiring of junior clerks, we have layers. We have audit clerks, we have examiners, and we have supervisors. In the case of audit clerks, we do not have a say on who comes as audit clerks. So I will find having clerks coming in with different degrees other than accounting, and it takes a bit more time to train someone who doesn't have the accounting background. I must say, though, that when it comes to this middle management level and upper, the more technical aspect, we do enjoy the support of the Ministry of the Public Service to be part of the shortlisting and interview panel. We cannot agree on pay scale and salaries, they do that part, but there have people that come with significant experience in the private sector, and we cannot do nothing about that. They have to come in in the lower point, because that's what the regulations say. So we have no say in that. But I do have a concern with the hiring of our junior staff, because it takes time to train them, it takes time to get them on board on what is the accounting that we do and the auditing that we do. But I'm, let me add, that I knew this for a fact for years. I've been in the office for twenty-five years. So what I did is to communicate with the National University and seek a external certification for my staff on auditing, and so even to solve that issue, since we do not have any participation with the hiring of the junior clerks, we are now of having this certification for everyone who comes in, so that they can gain the experience and remove that training from our hands, and they go online and get the training with the University of Belize.
Thank you. And a more specific question in terms of the issues faced by the department at the line ministries in terms of gathering information, are there issues, common issues, that you face over and over again when it comes to the access of critical information for your work to be done?
Right. We should have access to all information in both manual electronic format, but what we're seeing is that the information is simply not available. They don't maintain records, they don't have sufficient storage to put their records in, so that's when the problem starts to happen. Because the records are there for years, we have not been able to reach them. So at some point, I think you signed a news, someone went ahead and just burned records without proper authority. I add that I made a request on the matter, asking what happened, and they agreed that they did not follow protocol. But it is very important, there is a section in the financial orders that says that these accounting officers need to keep their records for seven to twenty years, specifically six fifty-five of the financial orders. So if they're not doing it, they're failing to do so. So highlighting to this committee that the records are not available is a huge finding. That's a huge finding for us. They should keep their records regardless of the timeframe, you know? So that's a big, that's a big problem. It is a big problem.
What is the current consequence of destruction of records, purposefully destroying records? What's the consequence of that?
It should come to the JPAC for your surcharging.
That's all for now, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Maria.
Honorable Hila?
Mrs. Rodriguez, I have one quick question. For the viewers out there, they might not be privileged to have a copy of this book, have been asked, and I really can't answer it further. Maybe you could help us. How can the general public?
This is available in our website, audit.gov bz, and it's right there. You can have access to it.
And the physical copy?
The, I have a very small budget, so I could not print as much as I would have wanted. I ensure to have copies for the National Assembly, who are my biggest stakeholder, but printed copies I wouldn't have, but it is available online in the website.
Senator Hira?
Thanks, Chair. Hi, Ms. Rodriguez, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
I noticed you mentioned several times about the lack of source documents, and I think if we look at previous reports you did, or that has been done by the Auditor General, that was one of the big reasons for the disclaimers in those opinions. Now with the whole idea of trying to catch up, you know, and I think one of the things that is necessary to recognize upfront is that the entire audit process is not, is not limited just to the audit department. A big part of it is dependent on what happens with the Accountant General. Now, knowing that there is a, there is this limitation in terms of accessing source documents, and knowing that if that is the case, true, like you mentioned, up to 2020, at least.
Twenty years.
Yes, but up to 2020.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, yes. It's almost, I believe we can assume going forward that the other reports will also be disclaimers?
We've had that conversation with the Accountant General, because if we cannot ascertain the previous year balance, how can we start with a broad forward balance? We've had that discussion with the Accountant General. When you meet with her, because I know you will meet with her, they are working very arduously to find source documents for later on fiscal years. So we've had that discussion with her, that how can we accept a current year balance if the previous year balance was not corrected? And we had an entry meeting this Wednesday to discuss the sixteen-seventeen statements, because she has submitted the sixteen-seventeen, and I told her, you need to begin working on those adjustments. It doesn't matter which year, but you need to begin working on your adjustments, because at some point you need to make those corrections, because the figures are just carry forward, carry forward with the discrepancies.
Can you explain?
Senator, I'm sorry, one second. I'd like to welcome the Honorable Doris Baramos Garcia. Welcome.
Sorry to be late.
No, 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 better late than ever. Senator, continue.
Can you explain to the committee, for those who may not have an audit background, what a disclaimer means?
A disclaimer means that you are not able to make an opinion. In our case, the basis was because there was not sufficient source documents or evidence to prove that the transactions being recorded are accurate.
It also means that the, that the, that the reports are not dependable.
Yeah, it's questionable. I made a statement that without source documents, every transaction becomes questionable.
So knowing this in terms of going forward, we know that the, the information are, cannot be supported in the statements. I think that's a big issue. Is it possible then to draft up an audit plan that could then expedite the process, given that these statements will be disclaimed anyway?
Yes, I've had this conversation with the Accountant General, saying that if she makes a submission of more than one year, with her disclosing it openly, that I do not have the source documents, then that is my basis to go ahead and provide disclaimers for the other years. Because the way it is received, it does not say I don't have the records. It's only when you get in the field work that you start to ask for the records, that then you get a response saying the following is not available, or the following was not found, or things like that. But if that is given to me from the start, then my office knows that there's no need to include the field work, because you won't find anything. So you move on from planning to reporting. The middle part of it, which is the execution phase, it won't happen.
Cannot happen. So you can verify, you can verify the information?
Exactly, exactly. But that has to be declared from the onset. If it's not declared, then the audit process has to go on, which is the planning, executing, and reporting.
And that's where the scope? And that's where the scope limitation comes in.
Exactly.
And with scope limitation, then you can't...
Exactly, exactly, yes. So that's why if the submission is made of three to five years in one instance, because it's not declared, I will have to seek for extension of time to produce these reports. But you notice that at the field work is when you are informed, I don't have the records, you know? So the field work cannot happen.
Which is part of the point that I'm getting into, because we are 10 years behind. We're 10 years behind in terms of audits. I think we would all like accountability for all those 10 years. But it's hard to nail down that accountability without the type of information to verify findings or at least suspicions in terms of what may have happened back then. And so it is that in mine, in terms of why I personally feel that, you know, we should make all his to try to get as current as possible, as quickly as possible, understanding that the information over a certain period of time to, like you mentioned, and possibly even more up to 2020, will not be very reliable to start out with. And if it's not reliable, then I don't know how you'd be able to hold that up in any type of...
So it's really in the hands of...
Any type of judicial proceedings.
Right. So it's really in the hands of the executive, in this case, the accountant general, and perhaps in collaboration with the Ministry of Finance, to submit these reports with their claim and just make it note there, I do not have the source documents to support my statements, and that moves me from planning to reporting.
Now, I know that nothing can happen without, you know, some type of discussions taking place, and I know that that discussion happens with you and the accountant general, but I also believe that some of that discussion may also need to take place with the Ministry of Finance as well. And so if we accept that we need to get current as quickly as possible, do you foresee those type of discussions, those necessary discussions taking place, and in what timeframe you believe that they could take place?
I do believe it can happen, and I'm ready to talk, I'm ready to move forward. I've spoken to several donor agencies who are very concerned, because we don't have current statements, we don't have current audited statements, and it's a concern for me as a citizen of Belize that what's going on, you know? So I'm ready for the talks, and I think that if they make a decision, it will need to come to the National Assembly. Everything has to come to the National Assembly, because the FARA indicates that these are supposed to be annual submissions. So I do believe that the permission should be granted by this assembly to give the accountant general authorization to submit more than one year, with her expressing the lack of source documents. That would make me able to write to the National Assembly, seeking an extension, the same extension as per the regulation, which is 30 more days to ensure that each report is submitted. Each report takes a bit of time to produce, because we have to compile all the audits that we did for each fiscal year.
The extension is actually 60 days, unless it...
Oh, it's 60 days.
Yes, unless it was amended since we adopted in 2005.
No, no, it wasn't. It's 60. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. It's 60, yes. Why I'm saying 30? I told my staff we will do this in 30 days, sorry.
Okay. No, that's fine. Now, you mentioned that you've been in the department for 25 years, and so that's a very long time. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's great to see you moving, you know, that you moved to another level. What in your view, having been there over this period of time, is the biggest impediment you see in the Ministry of Finance and in the accountant general's department? Why these things are taking so slow, so long, and why source documents are being lost or cannot be found or cannot be produced when requested? In your view, having seen this over 25 years, what do you think is, what do you see as a major issue there?
That's an excellent question. We have not seen these accounting officers being held responsible. Our audit reports go, come, and I'm not just speaking annual reports, I'm speaking individual reports, where we inform the Ministry of Finance and the accountant general that the source documents were lacking, but there is no action. And in reality, I do not have the power to surcharge or to take anyone to the commission for disciplinary. It has to be done by the accounting officers, it has to be done by the Ministry of Finance. So my reports go to the Financial Secretary, it goes to the accountant general. They are aware that these documents are not available at the individual line ministries, but no action has been taken to surcharge or to discipline, even to discipline, because the information was lacking.
Do you see this as more a lack of interest or incompetence?
Huh, that's a tough one. Perhaps, perhaps, I more think that there's been a lot of staff turnover in both the ministry and the department. So when one person comes in, maybe they come too late in the service and they retire, and that goes, nobody takes it on. I can give you an example. When it comes to losses, someone was dealing with losses, and then that person retired, nobody took it on, so nobody's doing losses. This is at the Ministry of Finance and accountant general. So I think that the structure of both the ministry and accountant general, their functions need to match, collaborate, and even when the Ministry of the Finance is the parent organization, the accountant general is an accounting officer, she should be able to restructure her department as she sees fit with the support of the Ministry of the Finance. So when these things stop, someone has to pick it up. At our office, nothing can stop. Someone has to pick it up. It can't stop.
Have you, in terms of carrying out your work, met animosity or dismissal type of...
It comes with being an auditor. It comes with being an auditor, but we are taught how to deal with animosity. We have had to interview people who don't want to speak with you. They're public officers, and they don't want to speak with you. Some go on sick leave, some decide to take vacation while the audit is going. And this is something that, for me, as an accounting officer, you're being investigated, and you still approve vacation leave to your officers to not be around when the auditors are around. That's a form of animosity. It shows that you don't want to cooperate, you know? So we do have instances where accounting officers would approve vacation leave even when an audit is ongoing, and then you can't interview these people, because you can't bring them back from sick leave or vacation leave. And so, yeah, it's...
That's something you run into a lot?
It's something you run, yeah. I would say more than, more than often, that it's more found that people are not making themselves available than they are.
Oh, that's a big statement.
Yes. No, and I'm very direct, so, yeah, very direct, yeah. And the consequences. When the report is issued, oh, I was not asked, I was not interviewed, the report is not fair, because I did not give my position. But yet, when we came to ask you to answer, you were not available, or you did not make yourself available. We find it especially in cases of frauds, where we need to submit a copy of the report for commission to do disciplinary action.
Let's say that you have, you're in a situation like that, and you're pressed for time, because you have a limited time to carry out your audit. I mean, you have 90 days plus 60 days extension if it is granted by National Assembly.
Yes.
Who do you go to in a situation like that? If you need to complain, if you need to report, how would you, I mean, what would you do?
It's placed in the book that the person did not make themselves available. I don't go to anyone.
Could you go to the Financial Secretary and complain? I mean, he would be the overall boss, wouldn't he?
I can, you know? But whether it will be acted on, I don't know.
Have you tried?
No, I have not. I have not. What we do is go to the CEOs. We inform the CEO that this person is not making themselves available, we need you to instruct that this person is, you know, make themselves available. But when you go through that route, they're even more hostile.
Right, but then if the CEO is the accounting officer, and the accounting officer would have been the one who granted the vacation leave, then you're really going, you're going a sick leave call.
So, in that case, what we've done, in that case, what we've done is to place it in the report. And it really affects them when these things are leaked. We can't leak, but when it's leaked and it goes in the media and, you know, these things come up, they do it. I think what Belizeans fear a lot is the protection of their name, and when they're in an audit report, it really affects them. So when it's leaked, that's when they start to make the noise. But you could have asked me, you could have interviewed me. We have those cases that when the report reaches Financial Secretary, accountant general, or even the Ministry of the Public Service, that's when they start to say, but I am available now, you can ask me now, the report process has ended. But I'll take that and see how it goes with the Financial Secretary.
The last question I have, Mr. Rodriguez, and thanks for your frankness. Given where we are, without any fluff, just be frank, but would you see us being able to get current within the next five, within this administrative term?
We've done the math, and perhaps by 2029, if we don't do what we were discussing earlier, the bulk submission, perhaps by 2029, we could be up to date.
2029, so that would be next, within this term?
Yes, yes. That is taken into account that I get them one after the other, because if there is a break in time from submission, report, submission, that counts, that time counts as well.
Would you be able to, and I know that I said that was my last question, but this is another one.
Oh, that's okay.
Would you be able to perhaps submit to the J-PAC? You know, what would be required for you to get current by 2029? And this would be within your department and external to your department?
External, I can answer. It will be the submission by the accountant general, the submission of annual financial statements by the...
Right, but it cannot just be the submission, it would have to be submission within certain time frames. That's what I'm saying. If you could maybe, if you could maybe...
Yeah, we can submit the same schedule I'm saying, yeah.
As I say, in this ideal world, and this is what I'm submitting, we can be completed and be current by 2029.
Yes, yes, we've discussed the schedule, considering the 90 days that I have for each year. Yes, that's possible.
Thank you very much.
Just make a note of that.
Mr. Garcia? Senator Chanuna?
Thank you. Just a follow-up question, Mrs. Rodriguez. For the abundance of caution that anyone thinks that what we're discussing in terms of where we are is chicken feed, so to speak, how would you frame today's committee in terms of the numbers that we're dealing with, in terms of potential waste, leakage, misappropriation, fraud? Is that something that is, I know in some of these software programs, you can pull reports, right, in terms of the different categories? But just so we have an idea of the figures that are going through your office in terms of these reports?
Yes. Per year, they run in the thousands, the thousands, maybe higher thousands, 80,000, 90,000. But if we're speaking from the backlog, we are already in the million when it comes to waste, misallocations, misappropriation. A lot of fraud is happening, and sometimes the frauds, one person commits a fraud of 80,000. And how can that not be noticed, you know, after several years, until audit comes and you find it, you know? So it is high. The fraud occurrences, misallocations, it's high. I would consider it high, but for auditors, everything is a finding, no? But yes, it is high, Ms. Chanuna.
Thank you.
Mr. Musa? Any follow-up questions?
Just in terms of direction, Chair, will we be getting into the report specifically?
Yes, a little bit.
Okay. Perhaps then I can ask a general but specific question, Audit General, because for those who can see the thickness of this book, a very lengthy document, very critical information, mind you in here, in terms of the spending of various line ministries. If I were to ask, or if any of us were to ask, what in particular jumped out at you in terms of very egregious that you would say that needs to be addressed coming out of this book?
Certainly. The issue at the accountant general's department, my leading entity for the financial statements. She needs all your support to obtain staffing, to improve her systems and the structure of her department, so that she can dedicate to financial statements. Because the accountant general has to do not only her day-to-day work and ensure that all of us get paid, but they also have to focus on the backlog. So for me, seeing firsthand that it took her to extract people from doing what they're doing to focus on this, is to me, I think she needs all your support in that. Not to discredit anything, but my office will also need the support to dedicate to financial statements, because that also happens to us. When financial statements comes in, a team is selected, and at some point, other audits are placed on hold to fully dedicate to financial statements audit.
Honorable Hila? Senator Herrera? Senator Chanuna?
Thank you. Following on, specific to the report, Mrs. Rodriguez, I will not even pretend I read the whole thing, because...
It was a very interesting book. I still recommend you read.
I was just about to say, no, I am sure, I used to like read, I don't know if you remember, I'm old enough to remember, I'm hard-pressed star of the week, and I would take things in jest. But in all seriousness, when I stopped reading, I think it was out of frustration more than tired eyes. Only to say that I don't know in terms of effective use of this committee's time, that given the length of time that these numbers, and perhaps even the officers, who I don't even know if they're still with government, so is there a way to determine that, following on an honorable Musa's point, that where this report does have actionable information that would be effective use of this committee's time, if you don't have that information immediately available, could you respond to us in short order and let us know? Because I wouldn't want to get really committed and sink teeth into an area of the report or a finding that is irrelevant and moot at this time.
I'm not sure what's the interest of the J-PAC, and what I'm hearing is that, well, you're interested in everything, just as I am. But I've seen in the past that not much interest has been given to the line ministry audits. There is a section on each ministry that we audited, and not more to, perhaps at this stage, hold people accountable, but to ensure that the present accounting officers are making a change and making a difference at their ministries and the audits that we have done. That will allow them to make changes now, and if anything is continuing from then to now, it can be fixed. It is important to work with the line ministries, for me, working with the line ministries to make sure that what we reported is addressed, not necessarily to hold someone accountable, as rightly said by honorable Mr. Musa, because they might not be there, but to at least address the recommendations. For example, we went all the way to the polyclinics in the south... For example, we went all the way to the polyclinics in the south. Nobody is, you have this perception that nobody cares about the south. So taking a look at that report and ensuring that the present accounting officer for the Ministry of Health takes a look at what's happening in the south and make amendments, that will really help the public, because that's what we want, to ensure that the services given by the government is improved.
So great that you mentioned the south, because one of the areas I looked at was the Dangriga Poly Clinic. So is it possible for you to take the committee, we all have our printed copies available, just to give clarity in terms of what you're, using that as a case study to what you're recommending to the committee in terms of the line ministries, the specific line ministries?
So that will have been one of the first audits? Would you have the page, Ms. Chanona? 182. Right. So in the polyclinic at the time, they were issuing to their staff non-interest-bearing loans and advances. The NHI does not have authority to do so. And in the government service, only the Ministry of Finance can give advances to public officers. So it is important that they do not use the NHI funds for their personal advances and loans. So that needs to stop, right? So that's one area that we can say, "CEO, you need to make sure that this is not happening again," because the NHI funds are, the purpose of the NHI funds is not for that. And again, we move on, and it says unrecovered loans. You give the loans, but you still don't follow up that you're being paid back this money. It's already interest-free, and it's not being paid back. So it is important that if there is any outstanding loan up to today, that they make every effort to collect back these funds. We mentioned delayed repayments. You have people paying, but they pay it on their own time. That should not be. If you were getting the loan from a bank, you will not have a delayed repayment. So you should not do that to the government, right? Payments for services not confirmed as received. We saw a list of services that we could not determine if the NHI did, the polyclinic did receive these services, because again, lack of source documents.
If you could fast-forward, since it's related to that same point, I believe, at 18, at page 188, is that similar to what you've just shared, right?
Similar, similar. So if you don't have supporting documents, we cannot confirm that the transactions were legitimate. So they all become questionable.
Now, I think when I referenced frustration earlier, I'm not an auditor, but I know one very well. This strikes me as kind of 101.
Basic accounting.
Basic accounting. So does that also point or further validate that, at least at this time, that the persons who were responsible for financial management either did not know basic 101 or were just not worried about complying to... Because this isn't best practice. This is like high school, right? I mean, principal accountant, principal of business, right?
Basic accounting. So the root causes for us is certainly the lack of training and knowing the regulations. A lot of public officers are employed. Their employment letter says that you're governed by the PSR, by the financial orders, but they don't take time to read the financial orders. They don't take time to see what they're supposed to do. So when we go on audit, they will say, "Well, I don't know what's the financial order, and you have to know because your employment letter said that you're governed by these orders. You should know." Besides that, comes the lack of supervision. Nobody monitoring who's doing what. So this goes on and on and on, because nobody is supervising, nobody is monitoring, nobody is checking it. Thirdly, comes the aspect of trust. When you interview supervisors and you ask them, "How come you did not notice?" "Oh, I trusted my officer. I trusted that he or she will do the right thing." Trust cannot work in an accountability system. You have to check, you have to monitor. Everything that we do at audit has to pass quality control before it moves on. So those three things will be the basis.
Well, thanks for raising trust, because, you know, this week has, and since we've gotten a copy of the report, you know, with NHI rolling out to other areas of the country, then this also speaks to what should be happening to make sure that the public knows that limited funds are going where they should be going and be handled in the way that certainly your office expects and 101 expects, correct?
Exactly, exactly. And that's why I'm saying that these individual reports are very relevant, because any CEO at this point can see that this is happening, can go back and make sure that this is not still happening. Because we don't know if they did any action. I don't, if you notice, I wrote and said, "Who responded to the report?" Only one person, one report was responded to.
From where?
Health. So the others, I don't know if they acted on it or not.
Following up on Honorable Herrera's interventions in terms of, I would say, the consistency in your submissions to this committee, that nobody is holding anybody else accountable, and that's a vicious cycle. How do we fix that? Or can we fix that in terms of making sure that if the people who are supposed to be holding those people accountable aren't, we hold them accountable? And if the people who are supposed to be holding that person accountable, we hold that person accountable? Because I think it has to start somewhere in order for it to stop, right?
I would love to see that. I think it's highly possible that these persons are held accountable. Many times, our reports will not ask for disciplinary action, but CEOs can do their part. They can take matters to the Public Service Commission for disciplinary action. Now, that's another story, because when you take things to the commission, you have to come with a lawyer, with evidence, with supporting information. And sometimes, due to technicalities, you lack supporting evidence to take someone for disciplinary action. So that's another issue going on at the line ministries.
Can you expand on that a little bit more?
Yes. So whenever a CEO decides to take someone for discipline to the Public Service Commission, they have to present a case. So the case has to come with evidence. It has to come with all supporting evidence. It goes to the commission. The commission invites the officer who is in question. That officer brings a lawyer. And so in our fairness, he can bring a lawyer, or he or she can bring a lawyer. But due to technicalities in the process, the person can get away.
Well, thanks for verbalizing that, and I will defer to the attorneys in our midst. But doesn't the fact that we don't have, isn't it the fact that we don't have source documents, that the numbers itself become questionable, and that all of that would be for an exercise in futility?
When we do our audits, specifically the individual reports, we ensure to have source documents. So you will not receive any individual report that's not evidence-based.
Okay. So when you go to the commission, it's because you do have source documents?
We are the witnesses. We are the witnesses for the CEOs, and we have these source documents.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that...
Once it's a report from our office, an individual management report, it is evidence-based. We ensure to go as far as we need to to get the evidence legally, legally.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sen. Musa? I mean, sorry, Honorable Musa? Sorry.
Thanks very much, Chair. Another specific question, just as an example. Say, for instance, you identify a situation of fraud in your Auditor General's report. Could you take us and the public through the process that you would go to in terms of making, say, a criminal report? You have your source documents, you have all the proof you need. How is it that your office then triggers the start of a criminal proceeding against an individual who you have identified may have done something wrong?
Very good question. We don't have that power. We don't do that. What we do is recommend to the CEO, based on the financial orders, to take the matter to police. So...
Has your office done that within the last few years?
Yes. We do that in every fraud report. We ensure to recommend that the matter be taken to police, yes. It is then in the hands of the CEO to decide whether they will press charges or not. And if so, the court will decide whether they need us as witnesses as well. And we do present ourselves.
And can you say, in terms of this particular report, whether any recommendation was made to CEOs from any of the ministries relating to 2015, 2016, that action, that criminal action be taken against anyone in particular?
Yes. The first individual report for the payroll fraud was recommended to police. It did go to court. The person was found guilty and charged a fine. Far less than what they took, but, yeah.
And that person is no longer in the employ of the government?
That person is no longer in the service, yes. That will be the first payroll fraud report.
Thank you.
Let me look for it.
Mrs. Rodriguez, the CEOs as the accounting offices, most of them come outside of the public service.
Most of them, yes.
I would imagine, and many of them are there for five years, some longer, but it's a pretty short period of time to really know that system. And have you found that to be a major issue, by them being the accounting offices, who are supposed to carry out certain functions and is a part of the whole system that we're talking about? Have you found that to be a major challenge, or a challenge at least?
I would not call it a challenge, because CEOs have, we have an open door with CEOs. They are free to check with us for guidance. Perhaps not all of them are aware, but they're all open to receiving guidance for us. We have had CEOs meeting with us to ask us about clarifications on policies. We had a CEO, I recall, about five years ago or so, asking, "Why is it that the ministries can't get their fund in one bulk? In the government service, you don't get your money in one bulk. It's a 1/12 situation." So we had to explain the process to the CEO. We've tried presentations to CEOs as an office to explain to them certain regulations. And I'm certainly opening the door for any CEO who needs guidance on the regulations, that they can come to our office. But when we meet it, we explain to them, "This is how it should have been." So it's just a matter of them expressing the need for guidance. But we can see, we certainly can see, and that's when we take the opportunity and explain to them, "No, this is how it should be."
How many internal auditors are there in the service?
I have a cordial relationship with the Chief Internal Auditor. I believe she has about eight to 12 staff at the moment.
Eight to 12 staff, and where?
They're located in, this is the Ministry of Finance. They have a Chief Internal Auditor, a Chief Internal Audit Unit. Other than that, the other line ministries do not have internal auditors.
So all of those are in Ministry of Finance? None of them are in any of the other ministries?
No, no, no. I am aware that the Ministry of Transport will have an internal auditor. They do have one. But other than that, I'm not certain whether any other line ministry will have their individual internal auditors.
Now, I mentioned that for those who, again, might not have the background, that the whole internal audit process is crucial for the integrity of the system, because it complements the work that you do. So that they are, they should be embedded within that department or ministry. And they would then carry out all the tests of the controls and do all that work during the year, so that when you come, you rely on a lot of their work. But this is a massive missing link and has been for a long time.
Yes, yes. So the unit is there. It exists under the Ministry of Finance.
Do they carry out those tests of controls and everything else in the other line ministries, or do they just stay in Ministry of Finance?
No, no. They do other ministries. It's not just for the Ministry of Finance. It's for the whole service. They do other ministries.
So when you carry out your audit, let's say you go to agriculture, would you then have a meeting with that, with the internal, or see what report the internal auditor sent?
In fact, she copies her reports to me. She forwards her reports to me. So I am aware of what internal controls assessment was done at that specific ministry.
So then if that is the case, why are so many things missing? I mean, because they would then be able to catch all those weaknesses within the system, and that's the whole purpose of them being in there.
Yes, that's so true. I would suggest that the Chief Internal Auditor be brought to the commission for her explanation. But her reports are submitted to us. We use them when we can. But the areas that she does are completely separate from what we do. So we have not been able to use any of her reports at this point.
But they shouldn't be. I mean, they should be, I mean, it's one system.
She has her own audit plan, and I have my own audit plan.
Just in some hurry, it sums off. I mean, really off.
Yeah. But, yeah, they do have their own purpose and function, as you rightly say. And yes, they should be focusing on internal controls, making my work easier when I do reach to that entity.
Yeah, well, the whole thing is with it is it really adds to the integrity of the system. And so they are there doing one work on one specific area full-time. And so when you come for your 90 days or so, you just go in there and so that you'd rely on a lot of the work that they do during the year. And you're also dependent that, you know, on them saying, "Well, this thing's working or not." And so you could do some tests, but it'd be minimum tests. It doesn't have to be extensive as you probably have to do right now.
Yes, that's right, that's right. I have not seen a financial audit report from her, because this is a financial audit. I have not seen a financial audit report from her. So she has not...
Well, it would be an internal audit report.
Yes, so at Accountant General, I have not, since Accountant General is the leading entity for this, I have not seen her.
I'd like to impress on the JPA. For us to look very closely at that whole internal audit process is a big, it's a very important mechanism in the process of improving the integrity of the system.
Yeah, because they don't need to wait for external auditors to come. If they do it themselves, they can put a stop to it long before Office of the Auditor General.
And they should be the ones catching a lot of these things. I mean, it should be, you catch it one year later, or an arc is 10 years later. I mean, that should really be current.
Right.
There's no need for that function to be non-current.
Exactly, exactly.
Afternoon, Ms. Rodriguez. So you were mentioning about the Chief Internal Auditor of each ministry.
There is one Chief Internal Auditor. She works under the Ministry of the Finance. And she does internal control audits for the public service, all ministries.
Okay. So she will have more updated reports, or audited reports, updated, or summary reports?
She does not audit the financial statements like we do, but she will audit individual ministries set up. So she should have more recent audits. I have recent audits. It's just that I cannot submit, because I have to submit via annual report process.
Okay. So are we entitled to those summary reports for each separate ministry? I mean, based on like recently?
From her or me?
From her.
From her. I don't believe she has a, she is to issue only to her management as internal auditor. So I think the Financial Secretary will have to be consulted on whether you can get a copy of those reports. Her reports are not public.
Okay. Another question is, so you just mentioned that you do get the summary reports also in terms of yearly. So how recent do you have already?
The internal audit reports?
Yes, internal summary report.
They're not annually. They are based on specific areas that she chooses where to audit. And then she will submit a copy of that report to me of her findings. So they're not annual. She decides to perhaps check the Coast Guard Benevolent Fund. That comes to me, and then if I go to Coast Guard Benevolent Fund, then I have something I can use to see what internal controls had been assessed. And then if I go to Coast Guard Benevolent Fund, then I have something I can use to see what internal controls had been assessed. So it's not annually. It's individual audits, just as presented here, but for different areas that her plan will choose.
And you mentioned earlier in your presentation that there is one, um, that you don't need to give report to, to the J-PAC. What is it again? I missed that?
No, I do not have the, the regulation that says, or the law that says that I'm to communicate directly with you when it comes to my audit work. So I need something, and that's why I brought up the MOU, with permission of the National Assembly to grant permission for us to have discussion on more recent work that the office is doing. But that can't happen because of, and I'll give you the section, section sixteen of the FARA, that says that I need to compile, uh, opinion plus all the reports that I do for that specific financial year.
Senator Nona, any, anyone else?
Just wanted to thank Mrs. Rodriguez for her time today. We appreciate the candor.
Thank you too, welcome.
Anyone else with, any final questions for, um, Ms. Rodriguez? Well, Ms. Rodriguez, um, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for all the information that you have given us today. And hopefully we can work together and to, to help improve the auditing system.
Thank you very much, too. I'm very much pleased for this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our members, is it okay that we go and get the Accountant General, Ms. Teresa Miranda, to come in?
Yes.
Thank you. Claire, can you please escort the Accountant General, Ms. Miranda in? Thank you. Thank you firstly. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Teresa, Ms. Miranda. Um, this is our first session right here. So I will open up the floor to my, my other colleagues, see if they have any questions. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, do you have any, have you prepared any reports or presentation? Yes, let us proceed with that first, please.
Okay, good afternoon. Thank you very much for the invitation. Um, the PowerPoint presentation that I have here was based on the request from the letter that I received. So this is what I had prepared in answer to the request. Okay, so the general question is that the, that was asked from me through the letter was the country's current financial position, mechanisms implemented over the years to strengthen financial accountability and reporting, areas where improvements are still required in financial management and reporting processes, compliance with statutory timelines under the Finance and Audit Reform Act 2020, for the submission of financial reports, and any other issue that may arise. Okay, to start with, probably what I can share, our responsibility, the Accountant General is responsible for the financial statements, the annual accounts as per FARA. Um, the timeline of events, a little bit of a background that I would like to share is that we have been pursuing, um, when we took over as management since 2023. So we started asking for technical support and we requested extension as per the FARA. We requested extension to submit the annual financial statements. Because when we met, um, the, when we took over, we met with a backlog of financial statements that have not been submitted. So what we did over the period, 2024 January, we were able to complete 2015, 16, 16, 17 financial statements. In February, what we did, we submitted a 17, 18, 18, 19, and 19, 20 financial statements to the Auditor General. February 19, 2024, we met with the Audit Department to color, to clarify on queries. Because they, after they received, they called on us for us to be able to clarify. In that same February, the Auditor General sent a response acknowledging the, the statements and presenting their issues. All the five statements were returned on February 2024 as well. The resubmission was done in June 2020, I mean, 2024, for the 2015-16 financial statement, after research and enhancement, enhancement that we had to do in response to the Auditor General's recommendation. July 2024, we had a second meeting with the Audit Department. We discussed about the resubmission of the 2015-16. October 2024, we had a collaboration with CTO, this is the Treasury Department, for us to be able to automate the financial statements. April 2025, we had another meeting with the Audit, Treasury, and Ministry of Finance. The reason for us was to meet with the stakeholders, for us to be able to know how is it that we can make improvements? And how is it that we can address the issue of the backlog? The third submission of this same financial statement was done 2015, 2016. The entry meeting was held in May 2025. So then we received the audited financial statements for 2015, 2016. We received it in July and August. Disclaimer of opinion was what was given to us. And the reason, the basis was the, that they were unable to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence to form an opinion. And there were significant uncertainties or limitations. The auditor does not express an opinion at that point. Reasons as what were in the findings and the recommendations from the Auditor General were that there was an elapsed time for submissions, the manual recording that used to be done at the Treasury Department in those years, missing supporting documents on detective statements, which can be material and pervasive, and the manual bank reconciliations as well. Where we need help? We needed he, we need help because what we have identified is that the current cashier module, the current cashier module that we have is where we capture all the revenue that comes from the departments. So for us to be able to make sure that we capture it correct, we have different payment methods. The current one that we have has a limitation. It is very much just recording of, of revenue. Um, so we have been pursuing this. Um, the procurement request was made since 2023. Currently, we're still in, um, trying to see who can be the provider for this. We have a SPAM project that is through the Ministry of Finance that they are helping us with. However, when we were asking for the cashier module, what we are asking, and the limitation there as to why is it that it has taken us so long? Is because what we are asking is that it's not only for the collection, but really for us to be able to tackle the issue that we have, which is reconciliation, cash management, debt management. And so those have to come along with any system that we have, we, we will be able to procure. Aside from that, where we will need help is the additional office space. We share an office space with the Tax Service in Belize City that really has us really constrained because then we cannot, we are talking about a restructuring for us to add, um, internal audit, for us to add, to add a quality control section for our department. But we cannot do so because right now, as we are, we are very limited. We cannot go for anymore. Then the human resource, the capacity building, retention and rotation. Our, we are governed by the public service. What we have been noting is that we train and we train and we train and people, there's a high turnover of staff. By the time we train somebody to be able to deal with the, to give them access to, to the bank statements, by the time you give them, uh, you train them for them to be able to be certified in the apps through the central bank, when they go, we have to start that all over. It's not something that happens overnight. That's not something, because then we have the manuals, they have to be certified through the central bank. So it's not something that any clerk can come today and then automatically you can place them for them to be able to do that. It comes with a responsibility because of the approval access that they get. So that is where we need help in terms of, we are governed by the public service. So we have to, if they come, the amount of work that we have, the Asper transfer, two, three months, they're gone. So that is where we have the challenge. Current financial position. I highlighted mostly on the statement of the financial performance, uh, which is a statement of cash rece, as per FARA. It is a statement of financial performance, statement of cash receipts and cash payments as per IPSAS, which is the International Public Sector Accounting Standards. What we capture when we did the statements based on IPSAS, it shows how public funds are received and spent, accountability and transparency, supports decision-making for resource allocation and sustainability. And there is comparability comparison to previous reporting period. I am sharing with you what the statement looks like, the current one up to 2025, 2024, 2025. This is how our statement will look like. What we have is a rough draft already. So with the help of CTO, with the help of our staff, we have been able, we can be current. However, we cannot submit this because then we have backlog that we are working on. So this is what the financial position would look like. It's automated. We just have to work with it. This is the cash receipts and the cash payment. So in essence, we would have the current financial position, what would be the last fiscal year. The challenge that we have, there's a proposed timeline for the submission of financial statements. If we follow the FARA, the FARA is telling us, when we submitted the 2015, 2016 in May 2025, sorry, correction, May 2025, it took us to July for us to be able to get an opinion. 2016, 2017, we submitted in October. Because then when we received the, um, Auditor General report, we have to go and look at the recommendations. We have to try to make sure that we follow. We need to try to make adjustments because those are required. If we submit 2017, 18, we are anticipating that if we work, if they work on the 16, 17, given the ninety days that the Auditor General has, what we are seeing is that from that timeline, that we are going to be submitting that same 2025, 2026 until January 28, if more or less giving them the ninety days that they would require to. So seeing this challenge, our issue is that the, while it is very important for us to finish and complete the statements of backlog, in backlog, because this is where we can have findings, this is where we can, um, make improvements, this is where we can see where activities that were not approved or authorized were conducted. Many things can be found on that statement once we complete them. However, we are missing because of the FARA, because of the timeline that they, that gives us and the Auditor General, we are missing on what is current right now. And we're not going to see current until 2028. If there is any action that we should take as the Accountant General, we will be seeing action until 2028. Really not, it's at the services, the way we call it. So what we did, we went and we submitted a, we requested a legal guidance from the Attorney General Ministry in September 2025. Um, October 16, we received a response. In essence, it's a long, um, advice I can share. Uh, but what they're telling us is that what our question was today for advice was, can we submit three or four of them in one? Auditor General deals with this. They take time. While we focus on the other ones and we submitted within time that we can afford to finish. Because as it is, we have up until 2020, 2020, 2019, 2020. But we had to stop because the Auditor General said, you have to deal with the adjustments before you submit. So really and truly, while all of these, we can pull them, we still have to go back to them to make adjustments. So now what we are saying is that we give them in two, in batches of three, four. Then we will catch up in 2025, 2026. So the response was very enlightening, yes. So we have to meet with the Auditor General. We have to, we have submitted a capital to the Financial Secretary. And we have to see what action do we take there. But in that advice, it also speaks about the authority coming from the National Assembly, from J-PAC. So that was very good because as it is, if we remain within FARA, FARA is not telling us who we go to for us to be able to do things like this. It does not address a backlog. So the strengthening financial management and reporting, which was one of the questions, what is it that the Treasury has done? We have established the Financial Reporting Unit. We have an assigned finance officer now that is responsible, that in those years, that was never present. We have assigned clerks already. However, what we have had to do is that we have had to ask for temporary clerks. But then we have had to be specific in the clerks that we get. We are asking for qualifications with an accounting background. Because these are officers that will deal with back statements. They have to deal with the, um, smart stream accounting system that we have. So they have to have a little bit more of a general background for them to be able to deal with it. We have enrolled our finance officers for a six-month IPSAS certification training with a conclusion to take the ACCA certification in December of this year. The Ministry of Finance has established in 2021 internal unit. However, they have, they were more active with us when they conducted an internal audit in public debt servicing and they conducted, uh, a public debt reporting. We have those two reports. So we have to actually be able to look at the recommendations. Some of the recommendations we have already implemented. Because what the internal audit does is that they focus more on risk base and they look at operations and processes and they make recommendations to reduce the risk. So we have automated the financial statements. And what we have also done is that we have gotten very good support from the Ministry of Finance and MPS as well in the increase of human resource to the key units within the Treasury. Because then while we have to produce the financial statements, we have all the different, up to almost ten, eleven units that are linked for them, for us to be able to gather the information that we need at the end for the financial statements. We have had also to establish a records management unit with policies. Reason, this is in work in progress. We have limitations in these. But this is very important because then one of the reasons as to why we got that opinion is because we have a limitation on the access of supporting documents. So this is the reason as to why we are focusing and we have gotten good support. However, this is something that we have to go back. We are talking about records from way back, which is a lot, and they are not in very good conditions. And it's not only that what Treasury keeps, it's what all the line ministries keep. So it's something that we have to look at. Yes, physical. Um, to give you an idea, our one was when we asked the team for them to be able to go to the records management, you found snakes, you find all kinds of things there. Because then we do not have a, a location where we have a specific for the records. There's no records management per se. So that's a limitation that was a very huge challenge that we encountered at the Treasury. That was the basis of the presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miranda. Mr. Dorries, do you have any questions? Senator Chanona?
Thank you, Mrs. Miranda. Appreciate your time. And if member serves, you also have an impressive career with the public service. How many years under your belt now?
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Miranda, the Attorney General has just advised the committee that it would be prudent for us to ask what areas of support, following on your, on your last slide in terms of health, citing technical support and other support. Can you be a little bit more specific in terms of what recommendations or in what way this committee as a, as a joint committee can be supportive, given our mandate and our role in supporting your work?
I do believe that one of the most important is our human resource. While our office space is also very important because you have to have the number of units required. What we lack is like what I mentioned, for example, quality control. When we produce statements, somebody needs to check it. Internal audit, because then we need to catch up whatever is happening before the auditor general can come to us and tell us something went wrong. While we have units that they have a responsibility, they know what their mandate is. They are held, or they can be held accountable through the financial waters because that is what governs us. We need to make sure that that is being followed. We need to have the operations, we need to have the policies, we need to make sure that how there is adherence and that there is compliance. What we have found out is that generally, even at the level of the finance offices, we have a huge challenge in having or retaining finance officers that want to remain at the Treasury because of the volume of work that we have, because of the responsibility that comes with being at the Treasury. While the finance officers at the other line ministries, I am in no way undermining what they do because they do have a lot of work as well. However, for the, for the Treasury, it's very unique because in a line ministry, you deal with payments. It's like an account section that they would have. However, at the Treasury, we're talking about, we have to deal with wire transfers, we have to, with international wire transfers. We have to deal with debt servicing. We have to deal with the posting. We have to do with the approvals of large payments. In every section that we have is very unique. So you would have, you would, we would find that once you start what people are accountable, okay, it's easier for me to just leave, just ask for a transfer, let me just go. We have a challenge with that because by that time, there's no continuity in the work that has to be done and you still have to go back again. So if we have that quality control and then we have the internal audit, then it's going to help us because anybody who comes, then there will already be these manuals, procedures that they will have to follow. But we do have a high turnover of staff and that is very dangerous. The ones that remain, however, if they're not performing, we have to go through the public service. You have to build a case. You find out that today they're not performing, they're not doing, they're, they do not, simply do not want to comply. You still have to take time, natural justice, you have to go through the process. It takes time. And it is consuming because then, while the work that we have doesn't allow us to that, okay, we have to be taking this case today, let me take it. When we take cases, for example, if we have fraudulent activity and we have to take the case, you have to conduct your, your investigation, you have to write your report, you have to make sure that you defend it, that it was a fraudulent activity and then it has to, you have to make your recommendation. It goes to the public service until it reaches the commission. If it reaches the commission and the outcome is not as what we expect, then that's another challenge as well. Because then nothing was done about it. So the human resources aspect in one answer, that would be our challenge that we have.
And I'm sorry, just to dive a little bit deeper in two points on that response. So you're, you as the accountant general, you don't have an IA or you don't have somebody that's doing this, you have to leave what you're doing and then you go and put together these cases when in your department?
We have to do because then I am the accounting officer. So while I get the reports, I still have to be the one to submit as per the regulation.
Okay. So even in terms of supporting your office and management for your, your unit? And then I didn't hear you say payroll in your list of functions, but?
We do payroll. We are in charge of making all the payroll payments to all the public service.
So just, just to give again frame for those listening, in terms of when you say treasury, this is the, the body, this is the, the basket that gets all the money in and then sends it back out as approved by the budget?
Well, it is the budget. The budget releases to the different line ministries. When the line ministries, they make the payments, then it's sent through the Treasury Department. It is through our accounting system. So while the line ministries, their finance officers approve payments up to fifty thousand, less than fifty thousand, anything above that, it must carry a third approval from us. So that becomes our, our responsibility as well. But we do the processing of the payments because then when we, when they make the approval, when it reaches to the complete status, then we make the payment through the uploads that we do through the central bank.
Now, in, in previous occasions, when we've had opportunities to engage in, in this way, you've made the point that you can only work so far as the information you're getting and then the auditor general tells us, well, I can only work with the information that the accountant general. So where are we, where is the gap happening? Where, where are we falling down in terms of making sure that everybody has what they need and everybody's doing what they should be doing?
Okay, it has with the line ministries and also we, what we get for us to be able to actually come, comes from the, through the Ministry of Finance. We get through the Ministry of Finance and we get through the support through the line ministries. Any payment that has to come, any contract that is signed at the ministries, they have to provide us with the copies. So the challenge is for us to be able to get the supporting documents. At that point, again, as I highlighted, was in the records management, that we did not have a copy. However, once, if the Treasury does not have a copy, the line ministers should have their copies. What we have encountered is that while the Treasury did not have the documents, we don't know if we didn't have it, but because of the conditions that the records were, they were unable to go into all of those. We have a, a large building with, with documents. It will take a long time. If it is there, it will take us a long time to, to, to actually be able to, to capture all of the documents the way they wanted.
Okay, I'll come back to that later, but just in terms of how, how we're getting here, because I, I hear you saying that within your department, there's high turnover. I don't know, does that mean we're asking one employee to do the work of three or what is, what is the burden of, of the work that's contributing to, to the high turnover of staff?
I think that what happens is that when officers come here, if it is a new entrant, you can mold them a little better. When it is another officer that is rotated from another ministry, if that officer has gotten used to just being able to do probably just invoices, that is what they will want to do, but that is not just what we do. It's different. If we do any invoice, it is at a higher volume. Or if we do other things as, for example, we have to do the posting of journals and that requires that you understand what the transaction is for you to be able to determine how you do the posting. We have to do approvals, we have to do the pensions, we have to do payroll, which is keying in information of an officer into the system. You calculating salary review, doing different calculations. So it is not really just one. More, we do have a lot of offices. However, what we are saying is that the nature of the work that they do is a bit different and requires a little bit more of their dedication and interest.
I see. Insofar as where we are now, and, and before I, I forget that we table Chair as part of the committee, I, I don't know if there would be any objections to taking up on your offer to share the letter from the Attorney General's Ministry in terms of the
Sure.
multiple statements.
I can do that.
Just since, I mean, you spoke earlier of snakes and bees, I'm sure, and, and everything else that we know happens with these files. To, to just say however we can support in terms of following through on AG's advice and getting multiple statements up because as far as we understand, without those source documents, then the auditor general is, is issuing these disclaimer reports and, and I, again, in terms of the effective use of this committee's time, trying to look at where we can serve the, the public's interest in making sure they know where, what's happening where, no?
Mm-hmm. We have tried. We have tried our very best because we understand the need for us to be able to review. What we're looking for is that we do not, we're not saying we will not do it. However, it's a little bit of a challenge because then when you have the same amount of offices, then you're, we are asking them to do for back, for years that they do not have the information, they have to go and do the research. The same process that the auditor general is doing is what we actually have to do. We are talking about ten thousand entries in a bank statement that you will have to reconcile. While the ten thousand is also happening and more in the current. So we do have that challenge that they are the ones who have to do. So we, what we have to do is that we have to do a plan. And that is the reason as to why we needed additional staff because other than that, we cannot complete it. And whatever we complete is really because then we need to move on. We need to actually be able to. All the information that we gather, all the information that are on the statements comes from our accounting system. We do understand that because the information in this system was what officers entered in the system through the payments that they did, it needs to be monitored. We need to find out, if, we need to verify and confirm that what we're giving to the auditor general is supported by the document that gave them the authority to process a payment.
Thank you for that. I, I yield to.
Minister Musa?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Miranda. In terms of the staff, the additional staff that you require, could you give us a ballpark figure in terms of how many additional staff would be ideal for the accountant general's office? What particular positions, whether it's accounting officers, FOs? And do we have a ballpark figure of what additional that would be on the annual budget for the additional staff for your department?
Okay, we are working on the restructuring of ballpark figure for us to, to, to be able to make sure that we can restructure. What we're talking about is that definitely less than a hundred thousand that will create, give us the additional two, three staff within the units that we would like to create. That is important because then when we do the, when we did the financial statements, the same officers that did the financial statements, then we produce the financial, financial statements, then we have to do the, the testing. We have to do the verification. So if you miss it at first, we're hopeful that you will catch it at the second, but then if we had the compliance and the quality control, then they do the verification. So you separate the duties and that is what we do not have. So speaking, we, right now, what we are looking, what we really would like to, to, to get the support is the additional creation, however. We are sure that we can get that support, however, where do we put them? We do have, we cannot put any more officers within the office space that we have in Belize City. So that is our greatest challenge that we have. We have been trying, we have used even our conference room right now became the, the financial unit because then we do not have space. So that spacing will have to be something that we have brought to. However, at the same time, we are dealing with, what we did is that we, we requested the relocation of the sub-Treasury, the records building here for Belmaban because that is where we have the greatest concentration of the records because this is where all the ministries are. So what we have done is we got approval. We're supposed to be relocating in, in December if all goes well. It's again, the approval came from the Financial Secretary because he understands, he has seen the, the, the conditions of, of the records the way they are. So we do believe that we are going to get it, however, why we have not gone ahead and pursue it right now is because we have to find first a space and then we can bring them. But it's something that is already being requested so that in the time comes, we will definitely have to.
Thank you. And in relation to financial statements, for example, we're currently reviewing a, a report from the auditor general for 2015 to 2016. We understand the difficulty of obtaining source documents, especially when there is such a long delay. So 2017 to 2018, because, or 2016 to 2017, which would be the next auditor general's report. Is, are there, is that, are there the same issues with source documents? And if so, up until what point do we have these issues with source documents, 2020, 2021? Because as time goes on, it seems that these documents are going missing.
Yes. I, from what we have done, from what we have found out, all the way 2019, 2020 is where we have this issue, a similar issue. After 2020, 21, we have started the reconciliation of those and we were able to gather a little bit more of those. So we do anticipate, no, we still have to wait for the auditor general to tell us, right, we need this, we need that. So what we have had to do, because then we still have to present the accountant, the auditor general with what we have done, the action that we took. So what we are doing is that we are formally requesting from the ministries, the documents so that if they respond to us, that is what we will present because other than that, it will continue to be an issue on the financial statements.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Honorable Hillak?
I would just like to thank the accountant general for coming today. I have no questions. Thank you.
Senator Herrera?
Hi, Ms. Miranda. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Ms. Miranda, you know, this, the accounting and the, the, the timeliness of those accountants have been a have been a major source of frustration on my part. You know, I, I, I've felt especially post 2024, that you know, like we almost wasted a lot of our time in that whole, the previous five years. One of the things that I would have liked to see was for us to be updated and so I'm, I'm, I'm encouraged to see that, you know, we're looking at, we're close to 2020 and that you're saying that post 2020, that the source documents would be somewhat more available, maybe not a hundred percent, but more available. So that's certainly encouraging, you know. But you know, there, there's so many things I believe that, you know, that accountability and responsibility have, you know, have to be, have to be placed. One is with the accountant, with, with your office, as well as with the Ministry of Finance. For example, the staff movement, I mean, if those are resignations, I can understand them, but when there are transfers, you know, it's like a little hard to explain, especially when we're in a situation where where, you know, we're backed up, you know, this committee has been behind you for a long time, behind the auditor general for a long time. Who would be approving, what percentage of those staff movement that you mentioned earlier would be resignations and what percentage would have been simply transfers?
The majority, ninety percent are transfers.
Transfers.
Mm-hmm.
And who, who would be approving those transfers?
The Ministry of the Public Service.
When you say the Ministry of the Public Service, you, you're talking about the Ministry or the Public Service Commission?
The Ministry of the Public Service.
Ministry of Public Service.
It is an approval at the end by the commission, yes. The recommendations would have to come from the Ministry of the Public Service.
Have you, have you put forward a case to them that when they're doing something like this, it affects you, it, it affects you significantly?
Verbally. But it is something that in all the cases that have come up, that we have had to write about, that is one of the recommendations that I, that is what I can do at that point, I can recommend because then at the end, it is up to the commission. that point, I can recommend because then at the end it is up to the Commission to decide what is the outcome of that case in every case that we have. We have very good finance offices. That is the reason as to why we have been able to, we have managed to pull through with these financial statements. This is the work that in the past was not being done. Somebody didn't do it in the past. Somebody's doing it now. So we have very good finance offices, but we also encounter our challenges as well when it comes to a few.
The Prime Minister is everyone's boss, I imagine, within the public service, all the ministries. Have you asked him to intervene? I mean, 90% of your staff being transferred or 90% of the, of the staff you're losing are, is based on transfers, I should say, to make it more accurate. I mean, that's, that's a significant impediment you face, even under the pressures, you know, the pressures of the expectations coming from JPAK and from everywhere else. Have you asked for an audience with him to explain this difficulty that you're facing?
What we had an audience, we had at the time that we met with the Ministry of Finance, what I posted there was with Minister of State, Honorable Christopher Coie, that was the last meeting that we had. But again, to submit formally documented, I do believe that is something that I will have to do. Yes.
When you have these projections, and I mean, I, I took a picture of it, you would have 2025, 2026 by January 2028. Does that take into account all these transfers? Or this is, or this would be in a perfect world? These projections that you have to achieve them?
I do expect that because of the training that we have, we have gone through currently this past six months, the finance officers that we have will want to remain, but it's not a guarantee because they are transferable. Unless we close the treasury as technical, then we can, they will not stay.
What is your attrition rate?
I'm sorry?
What is your attrition rate?
Maybe I, I would not, 30%.
Per year?
Per year. But it's, it's, officers are transferable. So the only way would be a restructuring of the treasury, similar to BTS, Duck Service, where the officers, they do have, they follow within a structure where they are for the development, for promotions. So that would be the, the ideal case that the treasury would have to go. That is the direction that we expect that we'll have to, to take the treasury to.
How much control do you feel you have of your department? I know that you said that, well, the transfers are beyond, beyond you. I mean, is anything else in there that affects you from a control standpoint?
Perhaps the, 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 the challenge and the control that we would have is that we do, I do not control the actions or the recommendations that, for example, come from the Audit General to hold people accountable. It is a process. So while we have the control to say, okay, this is what happened, so we can find, we, we can confirm what happened, what happens thereafter is, but that is where I do not have the control. And if I do not have that control in that, then that means that I still have to have a person there that is not, that is innocent until we find them guilty. So in other words, it's because of the system, it takes time for us to actually be able to, okay, if we found a discrepancy, something, we let the person, we remove the person because then it's a threat. But we cannot do that until due process is served. So while I can tell you that, okay, we can have the control, the treasury does have the control, we can find out, but unless the case completes and there is a, the Commission decides on what is the penalty or what is the outcome of the, of the case, then we cannot do anything. We continue to have the officer. So that is where you see that your control again.
Yeah, I'm, oh, yes, yes. It's, it's a difficult situation.
I can give you a very good example. We, we had a cashier. The cashier removed an amount of cash. She's the only person there. She's the only person with the access, she's the only person with the key. However, that person is still on interdiction because of the process that has to happen. It's something that even if we call on the Audit General, we can do the due process that has to take place for any officer that we find with, has committed a fraudulent activity. However, you can only remove the person entirely from the department, even if you found her, you, I can remove her, I removed her as the cashier, but I cannot remove her from the treasury until the case is completed. But that person is a threat, is a risk. We have other reports, but if the people do not come forward with us, then we cannot do anything about it because allegations, again, primarily allegations.
Now, I want to get into two other areas, Ms Miranda, please. One is accuracy, accuracy of reporting. The Audit General has said that, yeah, well, has said, and this has been going on for many, many years, that they cannot, they, there has to be a disclaimer, reliance cannot be made on the financial statements or an opinion given on the financial statements, simply because there are not enough supporting, support for it or supporting evidence for it. Do you see, do you see that, you, you mentioned that you see that improving after 2020. After 2020, do you see us getting at least better opinions, more reasonable or decent opinions on, on the, on the audit work and if, on the accounting system, I should say?
I do believe so. I'm positive that we are going to be seeing better opinions on those statements. The reason is because then we already have now the unit that is working. While we worked and we were able to get information to produce the statements, we couldn't get the supporting documents for, to, for us to present to them and because to the Audit General to tell them, okay, this supports the figures that you see on the statement. For 2020 to 2021, now we have the unit who is already doing the reconciliation part of it, getting supporting documents. Again, the records management that we have had to actually have a separate unit to actually be able to go and get the physical financial statement, the documents for the transactions that happen. And there are boxes and boxes of, of supporting documents that we have.
But this, all your storage and that type of thing has not changed. I mean,
We have made good improvements on them, good, good improvements on them. Yes. Because what they're doing right now, what they had to do first, clear up the area. Second, what they did is that put them by section. Then what they're doing now, they're entering everything in a database as to what is found in every box. And then they, and that is the reason as well, because then we had to pull out somebody from the treasury for them to be able to do that. Because if you get manpower and they, what they will come to do just to rearrange boxes, you have to put them so that when the Audit General comes there, you can direct them to where they are. So that is the reason as to why it becomes challenging because then we have to remove people who know what kind of documents and where they need to go. So that database is being, has been started probably one month ago because the clearing of, of the, the cleaning of the storage had to happen first.
I imagine you're a big part of the whole budgeting process?
Ministry of Finance.
Ministry of Finance, which would be include, include your, your area as well?
They, they consult with the line ministries and they, we do only the portion for the treasury and the sub treasuries.
But they would rely on a lot of your information to?
Based on what they, what, what the statements are supposed to be given them. But because we didn't have the statements, then the budgeting is done by comparison. Well, the Budget Director would be in a better position to collaborate.
The question I wanted to get at is, if the financial information is unreliable to the extent that it has been, wouldn't that bring a lot of question and doubt in terms of the numbers being presented at the budget level?
I, again, I do believe that a good discussion with the Budget Director would be better because then they manage that part of the system.
Okay. Now, you, I want to get into the internal audit. Could you maybe give us a little, some information in terms of what that department is right now, what, how it interfaces with the Accountant General's?
Okay. What they did is that the internal audit is the unit that they will be doing their planned audits yearly and every three months, I believe, but they do have a plan. And what they did is that they have their system where they looked at, where the risk, it's more on risk-based.
Yes.
So they looked at the different departments and they, where they had the major risk, that is where they are conducting their audits. What they do, they look more as operation policies in place, controls of the department. They have done the public debt section for the Treasury Department. And I can share with you, there were, in the approvals, in the approvals of the contracts that go to the central bank, what we noted is that the clerk does it, a finance officer approve it. So what they did is they, they added another layer of approval. So now the Assistant Accountant General must sign on those. So that is what they do. And what they, the recommendations that they gave us, we are putting them in place. Definitely, we have to add that duty to somebody else. So again, when the recommendation come, we have to look at who will do it and how it is going to be done. But definitely, they are doable.
Are they involved or are they carrying out these internal audit functions in all the ministries or is it just concentrated within the Ministry of Finance?
No, they are in other line ministries, depending on the plan that they have.
Right. And I know that perhaps maybe this question would be better asked of the-
To the chief.
To the chief of the internal audit. But the thing is, but it is, there are so many, there seems to be so many breakdown in the systems as evidenced by the source documents and all the other things, you know, in terms of, from a control standpoint. Wouldn't they be flagging those right along and so that we don't reach to the catastrophic breakdown that we seem to have right now?
It should have been flagged. I, I, the audit, internal audit was in 2021. So thereafter, you would probably be seeing a little bit more controls within department, within the ministries.
Okay. They work very closely with you?
More, unless it was specifically for the management. Aside from that, they are in different line ministries.
Yeah. Have you found them, their work useful?
Very good.
Okay.
Very good. I would wish that they would have like a plan for the treasury to conduct in the different units that we have. But it takes time.
How many, how many persons are in the internal audit?
I would not have an accurate, but probably about a 10 to 10, 10, 8, 10.
Okay. It's, it's, it's important because, you know, a lot of, a lot of systems and processes, procedures, controls are in place. But it's important that the internal audit function keeps those, keeps the integrity of those processes by examining them and, and pronouncing on them. And so, and that's an extremely important function. So I'm glad that it's functioning.
It is.
And I, I, I would hope that it would be in each ministry on a permanent basis so that, you know, to look at things that, especially like, for example, some of these problem ministries, like Ministry of Natural Resources, I mean, perhaps all of them should be in that ministry just to see what, see what's going on in there. But I'm saying that it's encouraging to know that at least, you know, you all have the nucleus of what perhaps could be something bigger.
Yeah.
Now, the, you, you, you submitted all these reports and you said that you'd be submitting them like every three months so that the Audit General is able to audit the previous one. You put in the, the adjustments and then you go on from there?
That, by, by law, that is what we have to do within the, no, the 90 days again is not applicable. So what we are doing is as soon as the Audit General finishes, then we submit. However, we cannot consider that time out because then when she has submitted the report, then we have to look at the recommendations, we have to look at her findings, then we have to address it. So when we submit now, we have to go back and adjust and make adjustments and then we resubmit. While we have them ready, for example, what happened with 1617, we submitted 1516. Now that we got our recommendation findings, we went in there, we found what we could have adjusted, then we made a resubmission. So in essence, we are hoping that if we could have caught that timeline, then if we could submit three, four in one, the way we attempted to do the first time, it would help us to focus on reaching current.
Why do you believe, and this is my last question, why do you believe that when the Audit General submits a report, the, the accounting offices or whoever's responsible to respond to some of the issues that were raised in that audit report? Why is that not forthcoming?
It could be different factors, but it shouldn't be, there shouldn't be an excuse for them not to take action. But it could be for these ones here, the officers probably might not be there anymore, for one. It could be again, no, it will be then that for them to take any action, they will have to have the backup. Okay. They will have to, to present the audit investigation, they will have to initiate a case. So there are many things that will have to, to come around with them to be able to pursue it. So, but most importantly, compliance to the regulation. The regulation is right there, financial orders. It may need to be upgraded to, to be updated, but it is right there. The general concept of the regulation is still there. They are responsible, they should. But we need more time as well. The Accountant General definitely needs more time because then if we are focusing and we're trying and we're coming back for us to be able to find and to balance off a statement that happened 2016, 17, we are losing and then we are letting other things happen. We need to deal with it. While we may not be able to do, and I'm not saying that we totally cannot, we may not be able to for sub, take action for a few, we really need to pay attention for what is happening. Then that is why.
I completely agree with you.
Yes.
Completely agree with you. Thank you, thank you, Ms Miranda.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Any follow-up questions, members? Ms Miranda, I thank you very much for your time and all the information you have given us. And thank you very much.
Thank you so very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.